Regular meeting number 59 will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the National Anthem. Councilmember Reame, would you please believe us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in heaven, with liberty and justice for all.
Over the last few weeks, our fellow Americans in California have been living under the threat of fire. At least 77 have been confirmed as passing. Another thousand have been put on a list of missing. I ask that we hold a moment of silence and send our thoughts and our prayers for peace for their families as we go through this difficult time as a country.
Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown Page, Reame, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden. Any person who takes any actions to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
Can I get a motion dispensed with the reading of the journal? Please call the roll.
Brown Page, Reame, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
This week's communications received by the city clerk office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read into the record?
Not at this time.
Are there any resolutions by members of council? Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight, I have Resolution 0354X-2018 to recognize the Private Leisure Assistance for Youth, or PLAY, grant program, the Champions for PLAY Committee, and the annual Champions for PLAY golf outing. I'd like to invite Tom Merritt up to the podium along with his guests. And as they approach, we are going to watch a quick two-minute video before getting started.
My name is William Webster. I'm 33 years old, and I have four kids right now that are participating in the PLAY program. Alex is now six. We started off in the Waikato Karate Class through the J. Parrish Martial Arts Academy. We came to the karate class, and I came and I watched them. And it's like, you know, I've always liked karate, you know, as a kid growing up. And I was asked, like, well, you know, casually, can I join the class? You know, it looks like, you know, it looks like fun. I've always liked karate. I ended up joining the class with the boys, and we ended up having, we had a blast. Right now, me and Alex are at the same, at the same level. Sensei calls him my shadow. I kind of learned and progressed through the techniques, and then I helped Alex learn the mechanics and get it down. And it really seems to, it really seems to help him, you know? For him to be six years old, like, it's astounding to me. I don't know, it's just like, sometimes, sometimes Alex gets ahead of me. Sometimes he's telling me, you know? But, you know, we learn, we learn from each other. When it comes to putting our kids through a sport or, you know, letting them do something, that's one of the things that always comes along, how much money is it going to cost me? How much money is it going to cost me? Well, you know, with the PLAY program, it's a scholarship, so, you know, it's free. And another thing of, one of the things I'll say we benefit out of PLAY was just sometimes having something to do. To me, to me, that speaks volumes. I think that's, that's one of the biggest importance. Importance is there, is just giving our children something to do at night and giving them somewhere to go. You know, right now, like I said, my children are younger, but when they get older, I feel I have every confidence in, and, and I feel safe in sending my kids to erection or knowing they can come here and learn and, you know, play and be safe.
Thank you. The PLAY grant program was established in 1993 to increase access to fee-based sport and recreation activities offered by Columbus Recreation and Parks. The grants are targeted for children 18 and under who need financial assistance to remove barriers to participate. The goal is to never turn a child away because of the cost of a program. Since its inception, PLAY has provided more than $1 million to local youth, and in 2018, PLAY distributed more than $78,000 in grants to more than 2,800 children. Through this support, kids have the opportunity to learn about the importance of a healthy and active lifestyle, the value of caring for the environment, and the ability to build essential social and leadership skills that help prepare them for success. To help raise the funds necessary for the PLAY program, a Champions for PLAY Committee was formed, and a fundraising golf outing is held annually. Currently, the golf outing is the only source of revenue for this program. So tonight, we are recognizing members of the committee for this important work. And with that, I would like to turn the microphone over to Tom Merritt to share more about the meaningful work you are doing.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown, Council President Harden, and members of council. We certainly appreciate your service and dedication and hard work to lead Columbus. I'm joined today by two members of the PLAY Committee. Mike Dos is our OSU liaison, and Carl Kennedy with Kokosing Industrial is one of the major sponsors of the outing and has been for well over 20 years. As you had mentioned, PLAY was founded in 1993, and since then, we've distributed over $1 million. And that's a lot of money, and that's a lot of golf events, and that's a lot of people participating, and most importantly, it's a lot of opportunities for the young folks, like you saw in the video. And I got to meet that young man and his father, and he is just really cool. And he was so excited about being able to do the martial arts programming with his father, and that was just really heartwarming to see how, how the program can affect young people and how it affects their families as well. As you had mentioned, this past year, we distributed over $78,000 to grants to the folks who are, have those opportunities to participate in the PLAY Committee, I'm sorry, in the PLAY program. And then for the past 23 years, the Champions for PLAY has hosted the only fundraiser for the PLAY grants, which is our, our golf event. About three years ago, we partnered with the Urban and Shelley Meyer Foundation, which has increased the prominence of our event as well as helped us generate some additional funds. And I just, we are here tonight to accept our resolution certainly, but also wanted to invite everyone to mark your calendars for Monday, May 6th, which will be when we have our next PLAY event. It's certainly a wonderful way to generate money for the youth of the community as well as a great day to play golf. And so on that, I know you have a busy evening this, tonight, and so I just want to again thank you for your recognition and this opportunity to show you a great video and to share with you the accomplishments that are happening through the PLAY program.
Thank you so much, Mr. Merritt. Thank you for your hard work. Are there any comments or questions? With that, I move for adoption.
Brown Page, Reame, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Reame. Councilmember Page.
Thank you, President Harden. This evening, I have Resolution 0353X-2018, and I would like to call Coach Maureen Kennedy and the entire Northland High School Lady Vikings Cross Country and Track Team up to the podium. This resolution tonight is to recognize Coach Maureen Kennedy for her success in coaching the Northland High School Lady Vikings Cross Country and Track Team and leading them to the 2018 City Championship. Coach Kennedy grew up in Cleveland, Ohio, and relocated to Columbus in order to attend the Ohio State University. At OSU, she ran varsity cross country and track. She has had a desire to continue her passion for teaching, and she accepted a position at Northland High School. Coach Kennedy led the Lady Vikings Track and Field Team to win its third consecutive championship since 2004. They have also won seven city titles, several regional titles, all district and all city qualifiers competitions. Coach Kennedy has received praise for her exceptional coaching abilities from the Ohio High School Athletic Association Ethics and Integrity, which is an award she won in 2016. She is also an avid runner and has completed 27 marathons, including the Boston Marathon. So be it resolved by this council that we do hereby recognize Coach Kennedy for her dedication to the youth and outstanding commitment to the Northland High School Cross Country and Track Team. I would first like to move for adoption.
Brown Page, Reame, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you, Coach Kennedy. The floor is now yours.
Thank you for having us here tonight. What makes us really special for us is this is actually my first city cross-country title as a coach in 18 years. We were able to win in track, but it's actually been wonderful since this is the first one from Northland since 1989 for girls to be able to win this. And I just have an outstanding group of young ladies, and just not only athletically but academically, it's been wonderful getting a chance to work with them. And the great thing is they're a very young team, so we'll have the opportunity to win more as years come by. And I'm going to let them go ahead and introduce themselves, so.
My name is Tara Thomas, and I'm a sophomore at Northland High School.
My name is Kanaya Webb, and I'm a senior this year.
My name is Tara O'Dare, and I'm a junior this year.
My name is Rebecca Maston, and I'm a junior this year.
My name is Isabel Alberto, I'm a sophomore this year.
My name is Fatima Henderson Bernard, and I'm a sophomore.
My name is Najee Alcor, and I'm a sophomore, freshman this year.
My name is Nacia Bailey, and I'm a freshman.
Congratulations, ladies, and keep up the good work. That's all I have, President Harden.
Thank you, Councilmember Page. President Potem.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight, I'd like to begin by inviting up the brothers from the Mu Iota Chapter, the Omega Phi Psi Fraternity to speak about their Founder's Day celebration that occurred this past Saturday. Mayo, welcome back to chambers. And when you're ready, the podium is all yours and your brothers.
Good evening, council. Thank you for inviting us. We are, our Omega Psi Phi fraternity was founded November 17, 1911, so we celebrate our Founder's Day every year. And this year, we're celebrating, this year, we've done a lot in the community. We've worked with Brittany Hills Rec Center. We've done Stop the Violence, Domestic Violence, event at Linden Rec Center. So we've done a lot of events, and we just want to make sure that we come out here to join you guys and celebrate our Founder's Day.
Could you each introduce yourself and maybe your leadership role?
Yeah, I'm Mayor McKenday, one of our members here in Mu Iota Chapter Omega Psi Phi fraternity Incorporated. And I'll let the rest of our members introduce themselves.
Thank you. My name is Greg Fontaine.
Derek F. Collins.
Steve Miller.
Sean Ruff.
So once again, we come every year just to come remind folks about stuff we do in the community and also ask them in the city council or the city to join us in trying to make sure we better the community in ways we can. We are all about uplifting the community. Our Four Corners, Principal Manhattan School Scholarship, perseverance and uplift, and the uplift part is the part that we obviously do in conjunction with the city.
Any questions, Councilmembers, my colleagues? We do appreciate your ongoing impact, and congratulations on another wonderful Founder's Day event, and again, the contributions you continue to make to improve our neighborhoods throughout the city of Columbus. Thank you, guys. So my next one, Council President, is going to be a little different. I'm going to invite representatives from the Ohio State University's Urban Art Space, from the Department of Design, Department of Dance, and the Department of Arts Administration Education Policy to the podium as I introduce Resolutions 0356X-2018, 0357X-2018, 0358X-2018, and 0359X-2018, all celebrating milestone anniversaries for each of these wonderful departments. I'll go ahead and describe each, and then we'll do the motion, then I'll let you, the representatives, speak to it. So the Ohio State University's Urban Art Space is celebrating their 10th anniversary at the Ohio State University's Downtown Arts and Cultural Hub, reciprocal learning space connecting the city of Columbus with the Ohio State University. Program is always free, always accessible, and supply is always provided, creating a non-barrier-to-entry arts and cultural experience. The Ohio State University's Department of Design is celebrating their 50th anniversary. And in 1968, the Ohio State University established the College of Arch, which then led to the creation of the Department of Design and the Department of Dance, both celebrating their 50th anniversaries this year. Both departments have established themselves and continues to be educational staples in central Ohio region, and an extraordinary, extraordinary example of the impact that the Ohio State University can provide to the region. As alluded to, the Ohio State University's Arts Administration Education and Policy is also celebrating their 50th anniversary, and it is a comprehensive and unique combination of administration, education, and policy in the arts. The most recent published ranking system puts the Ohio State University's Arch Education Program as number one in the United States, and the Arts Policy and Administration Program is ranked fifth in the world. With that, I'm going to move, if it's okay, for passage. I don't know if the clerk wants me to reach each one, or can you just move for passage of all four at once? All right, I'm told to reach one. So first, I'd like to move for passage of Resolution 0356X-2018.
Please call the roll.
Brown Page, Reame, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Move for passage of Resolution 0357X-2018.
Please call the roll.
Brown Page, Reame, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Move for adoption, Resolution 0358X-2018.
Please call the roll.
Brown Page, Reame, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Adopt it.
And finally, but not least, move for adoption, Resolution 0359X-2018.
Please call the roll.
Brown Page, Reame, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Now with all the official stuff done, the podium is yours. Congratulations on these wonderful anniversaries.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmembers Stenziano, President Harden, all council members. My name is Marianne Vanderheiden. I'm Director of Urban Art Space. Urban Art Space represents Ohio State's footprint in downtown Columbus and also very much its commitment to partners, partnerships in arts and culture-based community work. We're excited for your recognition. We've been in existence for 10 years and actively look forward to working with the community for the next 10. Thank you.
Thank you so much for this honor. My name is Mary Ann Beecher. I'm the chairperson of the Design Department. More than 50 years ago, a forward-looking group of professors advocated for the creation of a Department of Industrial Design that provided three programs that focused on the design of spaces, products, and communication systems. A lot has changed since 1968, including our name, but our focus on designing the preferred future for people has only grown stronger. And now with some 2,500 alumni in our wake, we are pleased to be integrated into the fabric of the thriving Columbus design community, and we're eager to continue to magnify our focus on socially responsible design. I do want to note that at the time of our anniversary celebration, we announced that we have joined the Design for Social Innovation and Sustainability Network, or DISIS, a consortium of design schools that works for the generation of useful design knowledge to create meaningful social change through collaboration with affected groups whose best interests are at stake. So we're grateful to receive your resolution, and we look forward to the next 50 years of joining forces with advocates for our city to help make it the very best it can be. Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Susan Hadley, Chair of the Ohio State University Department of Dance, celebrating its 50th anniversary. We were actually founded initially 72 years ago from a native Columbus woman who grew up south of the city and went to Clinton Elementary, did her degrees at Ohio State, and came back after her career in New York. We are very grateful for this as well. Ohio State Dance is part of a constellation of arts organizations and individual artists in this city who make Columbus a wonderful place to live and to work. I believe that what is good for artists is good for our neighborhoods, for our schools, and for our business community. And Ohio State Dance intends to continue to lead for the next 50 years. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, congratulations on these wonderful anniversaries.
Thank you, President Potem. Councilmember Tyson.
Thank you. I have Resolution 0362X-2018, and I'm going to ask for Tom Browser, who's the Associate Director of Permanency, and Raquel Breckenridge, Director of Permanency, to walk towards the podium, please. This resolution is to proclaim November as a National Adoption Awareness Month in the city of Columbus and to recognize Franklin County Children's Services for their work at providing safe, positive, healthy, and nurturing relationships and support for children of this community. Whereas each year, November is recognized as the National Adoption Awareness Month, a time to focus on adopting children in foster care, an effort that was first promoted by Massachusetts Governor Mike Dukakis in 1976 as a way to bring attention to this issue. It also allows public and private organizations to celebrate adoption as a positive way of building families and sheds light on the number of children in need of permanent families. Whereas adoption affirms the inherent value of humanity and signals that every child is wanted and loved. It is a blessing to anyone who was involved. It provides needed relief to birth parents who may not, for whatever reason, be in a position to raise a child. It fosters loving, it fosters loving homes for children. It enables individuals to grow their families and to share their love, and it fosters strong families, which are integral to ensuring strong and resilient communities. Whereas children are key to a community's future success, prosperity, and quality of life. In addition, children and teens deserve a safe and loving family where they can thrive in an environment where they are nurtured, comforted, and protected. Yet there are nearly 200 children and teens in the permanent custody of the Franklin County Children's Services who are awaiting adoption. And moreover, reports show that adopted children are more likely to have a better quality of life than children that are not adopted. They usually have better physical, mental health outcomes, and overall higher rates of educational success. Whereas there are no restrictions on who can adopt a child based on race, ethnicity, religion, sexual orientation, or expression, gender identity, or marital status. Further, the need for parents who are willing to adopt a sibling, an older child, or a young person with a complex medical and behavioral condition is encouraged as adoptive children in supportive, loving families are able to reach their potential through overcoming of post-traumatic experiences. Now therefore, be it resolved at this, at this council of the city of Columbus, this council does hereby proclaim November as the National Adoption Awareness Month in Columbus and recognize Franklin County Children's Services for their work at providing safe, positive, healthy, nurturing relationships and support for the children in this community. I move for adoption.
Please call the roll.
Brown Page, Reame, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Thank you. Mr. Browser, Ms. Breckenridge, the floors are yours.
We would first just like to thank the community for their continued support of Franklin County Children's Services and also to supporting the permanency of all kids that are in agency custody or in permanent custody.
Thank you, City Council. Tom Bowser, the Associate Director of the Adoptions Department. November is a very exciting month for us, specifically it is National Adoption Month. Last week, we had 12 children be adopted to seven families within our community, and it was a really exciting day. So thank you to you. As Councilwoman Tyson spoke to, we are always in need of foster parents, adoptive parents, and kinship parents who can assist us in permanency for all of our children.
And Mr. Browser or Ms. Breckenridge, if there are people from viewing and listening audience that are interested in, in any of those areas you just mentioned, how can they, how can they contact you?
We have an adoption inquiry hotline, the number 614-341-6000.
Thank you. And so to the viewing and listening audience, I know we had a meeting last week on our Commission on Black Girls, and certainly we heard about the number of girls that are within the foster care system. And so certainly want to just ask the viewing and listening audience that if you have, you know, an open heart, a family that says we want to bring somebody else in, please contact them, because our children are certainly, these are great kids who need to be with, you know, amazing families. And so I do appreciate all the work that you're doing, and I know that it's, Christmas is coming, holiday time is coming, and we need, so I kick, I'm kicking this off, I gave them a gift, some gifts today, because we are, Franklin County Children's Services is in our need of gifts for our children, for the children. And so on December the 5th, there is an event called Black Girl Magic that will be at Copious from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And you can, on the wish lists are things like dolls of all ethnicities, hair care items, skincare items, books that have multicultural authors and characters, STEM items, and educational board games. And if you want to help make a young person's holiday wish come true, you can call 614-275-2525, or email holidaywish@fccs.us. So please, again, support them in that way also. There are no other questions or comments? All right, thank you very much. Thank you for your work. And I have one announcement. The Human Services Grant Program, the city of Columbus Department of Development has issued a request for proposals for the 2019 through 2020 Human Services Grant Program. The period for submission of proposals open November the 16th of 2018 and ends January the 4th. This is the first year of a two-year, two-year cycle of funding. All agencies selected will be eligible for both 2019 and 2020. The second year funding is contingent upon the availability of funds and a review of performance measures for the first year. To reduce the burden on agencies, we partner with United Way of Central Ohio to streamline the RFP submission process. The partnership, this partnership allows all application materials to be submitted through United Way's portal, the ECE Impact. A grant information session has been scheduled for November 27th of 2018 to learn more about the request for proposals. And anyone who's interested are encouraged to attend and please RSVP at www.columbus.gov. Human Service RSVP. This is really important, so for all those agencies who have been funded for the last four years, if you are wanting to, again, to seek funding from the city of Columbus, this is a process to go through. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Thank you for your leadership on the grants funding process. I have one resolution to bring before council. It is 0437X-2018, and as I read it, I ask that President Habibah Bankston of Columbus Urban League Young Professional come forward, as well as members of CULYP. Come stand with your president, please. It is, it is a real honor to celebrate the leadership of President Habibah Bankston and the Columbus Urban League Young Professionals Organization. Several years ago, Habibah was tapped by Congresswoman Beatty and President Stephanie Hightower of the Urban League to resurrect a Urban League Young Professionals Organization. It had been defunct for a while, and it was a tall order. Over these last several years, President Bankston and her executive team have grown the organization to 300 members. They have instituted events and programmings around our community, like Black Restaurant Week that just wrapped up, and several other programs that add to the vitality of our community. It is so important that for our city to grow, we have to have a community that celebrates its diversity and that is vibrant. its diversity and that is vibrant. And I have been blown away by the ability for this young organization to really create a space where young people, not just young African Americans, but particularly for young African Americans, where we feel that this community is for us and in creating spaces and exposing folks to the great opportunities there are to be an employee here, to have a fun and culture nightlife here, but also to serve here. And so I am very grateful for Ms. Bangston's leadership. Ms. Bangston is in the last few weeks of her presidency and excited for the new president. But before she left her post, I wanted to make sure she would celebrate it. Are there any comments by members of my council? Councilmember Page.
Thank you, President Harden. I would just like to echo your comments and to thank President Bangston for her exemplary leadership as a young woman of color, young professional. I just appreciate your poise and your class and just your desire and passion for young women of color, particularly in our community. So we look forward for you continuing to do great things in CUYP, but across our city as well. And I thank all of you for the work that you do. It's not just from your community engagement activities, but have been being great role models for young people in our community. So thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
I will echo all that, but just add that the mark of good leadership is building something that lives beyond you. It's not about the leader, but what was built. And from knowing you and from seeing the work of the organization, I am confident that that's exactly what you're leaving behind, and we all thank you for that.
Thank you.
With that, sure, Councilmember Tyson.
Thank you, President Harden. To Habibah, I certainly want to say this in admiration of just you and recognizing that, understanding some other challenges you have had in your life, and that how you have overcome those challenges, especially with God, overcome those challenges, and then to be able to be used in a way to make such a significant difference in the lives of the individuals that you've touched at the Urban League, but also in the community. And it takes a special, it takes a significant amount of resiliency to be able to do that. And so I admire you, and I'd also admire everyone that's standing with you, because we don't do anything by ourselves. It requires having the leadership skills and ability, having the fortitude, the resiliency that you have to engage people to be around you, and then to let each of them be able to shine in their own way to lead. So congratulations to each of you for shining in each of your respective positions to make our community a better place. Congratulations. Look forward to your new, the next person that's coming in that will take it to a whole another level, too. So thank you.
Thank you.
With that, the floor is yours. President Bangston.
Thank you so much. I'm not even sure what to say. I'm so humbled. President Harden, thank you so much for this recognition. It means more to me than you know. And to all of council, thank you for your support of me, my leadership, and just for your overall support of the Columbus Urban League Young Professionals. We could not have gotten to this point in just the overall work of the organization without your support. President Harden, you know that I am not originally from Columbus, but my life has changed since I've been a part of this community. And for that, like, that is the exact reason why I'm so passionate and committed to serving this community, just because of everything that it's given me. It's been a true honor to build and lead this organization. I don't think that I can say thank you for this recognition without thanking President Hightower. I'm trying not to cry because I don't have an attractive cry. Without thanking President Hightower and also members of the Columbus Urban League Board of Directors, who I believe are here, they saw a leader in me when I did not see one in myself, and I'm grateful for the opportunity. I also want to say thank you to my team. I simply had a vision four years ago to build something that I knew this community needed, that people like me needed, and they followed me blindly. And everything that this organization has accomplished could not have happened without each and every one of you. So I just want to say thank you for your service to the Columbus Urban League, to the National Urban League, as well as to this community. This means so much to me. This is not going to be the first or the last time that you see me up here. I am excited about the next chapter in my leadership and what I hope to do in this community. So thank you so much again, President Harden. Nobody ever makes me cry, so you should really, really be excited about this one. But to each and every one of you, thank you for your continued support of me to this organization. Just thank you again.
I think that was a beautiful cry, President Bangston. With that, can I get a motion? In a second. Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
This ordinance is adopted.[957.19][957.19](APPLAUSE). Are there any requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or a resolution from the consent action portion of the agenda? Also, first, any comments from our election officials? I want to recognize Ms. Peg from South Linden. I can never usually see you, so I was excited to see over and remember. May we now have a motion to waive reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk? Mr. Second. Oh, clerk, please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Will the clerk now read into the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Finance Committee ordinance is 2865 and 3104-2018. Recreation and Parks Committee ordinance is 2820, 2823, and 2824-2018. Public Service and Transportation Committee Resolution 346X-2018. Ordinance is 2914 and 2918-2018. Economic Development and Small Business Committee ordinance is 2993, 3118, 3120, and 3121-2018. Neighborhoods Committee ordinance 3082-2018. Technology Committee ordinance is 2936 and 3020-2018. Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 2848, 2862, 2901, 2903, 2906, 2910, 2924, 2956, 2965, 2967, 2975, 3000, 3009, 3010, 3015, 3030, 3035, and 3037-2018. Rules and Reference Committee ordinance is 3006 and 3023-2018.
We have no speakers on first reading. The following ordinance appear on our agenda as consent action. Will the clerk now read those ordinance numbers into the record?
Resolutions of Expression 352X, 355, 349, 350, 361X-2018. Finance Committee ordinance is 2565, 2682, 2819, 2944, 2995, 3036, 3041, 3063, and 3095-2018. Recreation and Parks Committee ordinance is 2813, 2814, 2817, 2818, 2821, 2822, 3110-2018. Education Committee ordinance 3064-2018. Public Safety Committee ordinance is 2863, 2878, 3012, 3014, 3059, 3073, 3114, 3167-2018. Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinance is 2386, 2705, 2825, 2917, 3026, 3028, 3029, 3031, 3033, 3069-2018. Administration Committee ordinance 3032-2018. Economic Development and Small Business Committee ordinance is 2874, 2947, 3054, 3212-2018. Housing Committee ordinance is 2992, 3003, 3004, 3005, 3053, 3144, 3153, 3178, 3179, 3180-2018. Judiciary and Court Administration Committee ordinance 2925-2018. Technology Committee ordinance is 2764, 2974, and 3062-2018. Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 2738, 2806, 2839, 2858, 2904, and 2931-2018. Health and Human Services Committee ordinance is 2982-2018. Appointments from the mayor's office numbered A0278, 279, 280, 281, 282, 283, 284, 285, 286, 287, 288, 289, and 290-2018.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have one speaker on the consent action portion of the agenda. Mr. Nate Wilkinson, would you please come, speaking on ordinance 3153, and I believe that is in the Housing Committee? Welcome back to council.
1612 Arlington Avenue, Mr. Nathanae George Wilkins. Speaking against of 3153, 2018. I know this happened multiple times. I came back to this podium multiple times to not to demo any structures. Four reasons why I'm against this is because it doesn't give residents opportunity to seek after some of these lapped-in homes that's been standing over for decades. We read a list to you time after time again. 1602 Bryantwood has been vacant for more than 30 years. 1597, 1609, Republic Avenue, it's a five-unit apartment complex that's been vacant in North Linden for quite some time. Mind you, several of these properties have been vacant for decades and time after time again. My home sits catty-corner from a vacant property that's been idolized and vacant in poor condition at 1617 Arlington Avenue. A lady has owned it for several years. And time after time again, it sits vacant, rotted, and falling apart time after time again. I had came to you multiple times again and again with these properties. 1573 of Cleveland Avenue has been vacant for more than 30-plus years, 30-plus years. Frustration here, you know, I'm tired. I'm tired. There's nothing being done. Here I am, a resident, see opportunity in property that's still idolized and vacant, abandoned, and poor condition. I'm going to show you several pictures of 1617 Arlington Avenue that has been like this for decades since I moved in my house. I don't understand what this is going to have to take, raising property tax or doing something with these owners and refuse to fix this mess. Once again, 1525 Genesee Avenue is a two-unit apartment complex that's been vacant for more than 25 years. What can we do? We talk about here an epidemic out here that people don't have places to go. And here, we could use this money to not tear down. If these houses can be salvaged, it can be fixed up by citizens' involvement, young folks, professionals, getting them off the street. Give us somebody the annual opportunity, like myself. You know, in closing, I just want to say one thing. 1443 of Genesee Avenue has been sold. If we can take care of property and give them to liquidate it for $500 in cash, maybe we could try something new. But Linden is a hard-hit neighborhood. We are tired of demolition. We're tired. We could use this money for something else. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. First, Assistant Director Reed, would you speak to the process that we get to before funds are dispersed for demolishing a home, the ordinances to provide resources for demolition purposes?
Thank you, President Harden, members of council. The ordinance that Mr. Wilkins spoke on tonight is our authority to place an assessment on these properties for house properties that were demolished from court order demos. That's the ordinance that is Mr. Wilkins was speaking to this evening.
Thank you. And I wonder, Councilmember Page, I was thinking about the program that you started, spearheaded lifting, just wanted to make sure that the public knew about our opportunities to use land bank properties to put folks to work, to bring them back.
Absolutely. Thank you, President Harden. And this council has been very supportive of learning skills to lift neighborhoods, which is also LSLN. And we give priority for smaller nonprofits that are using land bank properties to redevelop them, working with either youth or those who are returning back to society. This year, we awarded five different organizations that will receive $20,000 to, again, contribute back to our communities, and we're looking forward to the work that they will do, not only in the neighborhoods, but in the lives of the people who will be employed through this grant program. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you for your leadership. If there are no further questions or comments on the consent action portion of the agenda, may I have a motion for approval of these items designated as consent action? Clerk, would you please call the roll by voice?
Ms. Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Yes, with the exception of A0289-2018, which I am abstaining. The consent action portion of the agenda passes. We will now proceed with second reading of 30-day tabled and emergency legislation. The first committee to come before council is the Finance Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Brown. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight in Finance, we have ordinance 2776-2018 to adopt the 2019 Action Plan Budget, which implements the fourth year of the five-year consolidated plan for the Community Development Block Grant, Home Investment Partnerships, Emergency Solutions Grant, and Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS Programs, to authorize the filing of the plan application with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and to declare an emergency. This ordinance is jointly sponsored with Councilmember Jaisa Page. The federal HUD grants that make up the Consolidated Action Plan Budget represent important investments in Columbus neighborhoods. We held a public hearing on October 23rd to review the 2019 Action Plan Budget and to receive public input. This marks the fifth and final year of the current five-year consolidated plan, and the process will begin shortly to develop a new five-year plan to strategically invest these federal grants. That planning process will include ongoing opportunities for public input. The Finance Department will come back to us at council with details of the new planning process sometime in the next year. Are there any, Councilmember Page, do you have anything you want to add? Anything else from my council members? Councilmember Stenziano?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to thank you all for your ongoing stewardship in the department. I know in my work at the State House, worked with a lot of folks through the Ryan Wye HIV/AIDS Program and how important housing is when they're going through a lot of difficult times. And so really appreciate the city's ongoing commitment to work with HUD on this important initiative, not only for individuals with AIDS, but across the city. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions for my colleagues? Seeing none, I move to take from the table.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Rule from the table.
And I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Next, we have ordinance 2868-2018 to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to enter into a contract on behalf of the Office of Construction Management with RW Sederlin Building Company for elevator modernization at the Jerry Hammond Center, 111 East Broad Street, 1111, 1111 East Broad Street, sorry, and to authorize the expenditure of $1,932,000 from the Construction Management Capital Improvement Fund. This project includes the renovation of six elevators, which are at the end of their usual life, to the point where difficulty obtaining necessary replacement parts complicates routine maintenance. This project will upgrade the equipment and controls for each elevator, ensuring that they function properly and are up to code. The Office of Construction Management received five bids for this work, and the company was selected as the lowest and most responsive bidder. Questions or comments? I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
These next three ordinance make up the 2019 operating budget for the City of Columbus, which the mayor proposed last Wednesday. We will be tabling the ordinances tonight in order to hold public hearings in the coming weeks as council reviews the budget prior to consideration for final passage. I will hold the first hearing in council chambers on Tuesday, November 27th, at 4:00 p.m. This This will provide a broad overview of the budget with brief presentations from every city department. Then additional hearings will be held to cover each department's budget in greater detail. The schedule for these hearings has been published and will be shared by our communication team. As always, public input is welcome throughout this process, either through the public testimony at a hearing or by contacting council offices directly. With that, I will read the titles and request to table the three budget ordinances. Ordinance twenty eight seventy dash twenty eighteen, to make appropriations for the twelve months ending December thirty-first, twenty nineteen, for each of the several object classes for which the City of Columbus has to provide, from the monies known to be in the treasury of said city of Columbus, in the fund known as the General Fund, during the said twelve months from the collection of all taxes and from other sources of revenue, the amount of nine hundred and twelve million dollars, and to declare an emergency. I request to table indefinitely pending public hearing.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Tabled indefinitely.
Ordinance twenty eight seventy-one dash twenty eighteen, to make appropriations and transfers for the twelve months ending December thirty-first, twenty nineteen, for other funds for various divisions, to authorize the city auditor to make transfers as may be necessary and to declare an emergency. I request to table indefinitely pending public hearing.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Tabled.
Next, ordinance twenty eight seventy-two dash twenty eighteen, to make appropriations for the twelve months ending December thirty-first, twenty nineteen, for selected other funds for various divisions, to authorize the city auditor to make transfers as may be necessary and to declare an emergency. I request to table indefinitely pending public hearing.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Tabled.
Thank you. I also have two ordinances in Recreation and Parks, if I may move on, Council President, thank you. Ordinance twenty-five thirty-five dash twenty eighteen, to establish a budget reservation in the amount of one million one hundred and twelve thousand two hundred dollars, to authorize the transfer of one hundred and sixteen thousand two hundred ninety-one dollars and twenty-five cents within the Recreation and Parks voted bond fund, to amend the twenty eighteen capital improvements budget, to authorize the expenditure of one million one hundred and twelve thousand two hundred dollars from the voted Recreation and Parks Bond Fund for the reimbursement of staff time related to the administration of Recreation and Parks twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen capital improvement budget projects, and to declare an emergency. This ordinance aligns with generally accepted accounting principles and the city auditor's internal policy by capitalizing project management and construction labor costs for CRPD capital projects. Any questions for my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Our next ordinance is twenty-eight oh nine dash twenty eighteen, to authorize the expenditure in the amount, in the amount of one hundred and sixty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty-two dollars and five cents for the purchase of golf turf pesticides from the Recreation and Parks Operating Fund, to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to enter into contract with Harrell's LLC for the purchase of golf course pesticides for the Recreation and Parks Department, to waive the formal competitive bidding provisions of code and to declare an emergency. We have one speaker in opposition to this ordinance, Ms. Pam Unger.
I'll ask you to forgive me, I brought my driving glasses instead of my reading glasses, so I may stumble here. But I am Pam Unger, I am still a resident of Salem Village and of the planet. I struggled briefly about whether I should speak for or against this ordinance. It seemed like the kind of choice between being burned as a witch or drowning to prove that I wasn't a witch. Because if I speak against it, I'm speaking against prudent money management. And if I speak for it, I'm speaking for the use of toxic chemicals on our golf course. And then it occurred to me that, of course, you all have already decided that you will pass this ordinance unanimously, or it wouldn't be on the agenda. And so I'm going to go ahead and speak against it, even though I really want to commend the city golf course administrator, Mike Musser, for his prudent stewardship. I have to challenge the notion that we're talking about safer chemicals. Of course, it was sensible of him to test to see what they had been using was actually working. And he discovered that, no, it wasn't working because the things that they were trying to kill had developed resistance. Now, we know from the, what we've learned about the resistance of the things that we used antibiotics for, that the answer is not to keep piling more and different antibiotics on the problem, but to stop the indiscriminate prescription for antibiotics. So I simply want to conclude by reading a portion of my statement last November, when a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars was requested on an emergency basis, quote-unquote, for golf course chemicals. So we're making progress, twenty thousand dollars less. As a psychotherapist, I spent decades in the business of supporting people to make changes in their lives. And the longer I spent, the more I concluded that we humans cling to, at great cost, things continuing to be done as we've always done them. Change, it's difficult and threatening, even if it's positive change. I challenge the Parks and Recreation and this city council to take a leadership role in making Columbus and the land it inhabits safer for all living creatures by moving away from the use of toxic herbicides and pesticides on municipal grounds. The only real emergency we face in this instance is our own continued toxic assault on the earth on this planet we call home.
Thank you, Ms. Unger. I appreciate you coming down and sharing your, your testimony. And, and I will just share that, you know, I almost, I have a split mind about this as well, and you come down on the side of prudent planning. But one thing that I've talked to the department about, the Recreation and Parks Department does a phenomenal job managing so many things in our city, parkland, recreation centers, programs, the, the play committee, for example, that we just had a resolution on earlier. And we have asked them to review some alternatives and understand their impact and their cost so that we can make a more prudent decision. It is hard for them to do that at warp speed because of how much is on their plate. So one thing that we've discussed with them is how to leverage, you know, my own staff to help make sure that the department can be looking into this in as diligent a manner as possible so that we have options. And one thing I've, I guess, tried to, to describe as an analogy, probably it's lacking a bit, but you know, I think about my own house. And I love to have a perfectly bright white, clean tub with not a single piece of dirt, and bleach would help me do that, right? Bleach would make it look shiny and white. But I have a three-year-old, and I have a seven-month-old, and they take baths in that tub, and, well, the seven-month-old doesn't quite yet, because he doesn't sit terribly well. But the three-year-old does, and so I don't want her sitting in bleach every day. And I therefore put up with a little bit of dirt in that tub. It's clean enough, I promise, but you know, I put up with like, not the perfect bright white sparkle. So that's kind of what we've talked to the department about. What, what can we, what other treatments can we use on our playing fields, on our golf courses, that are going to be very safe and keep our grounds attractive and keep us proud of the look and also the function of our properties? So we are working through that. I'm, I'm sorry to spend so much time sort of belaboring my analogy, but I hope that you understand that it's, it is a conversation we're having. Is there anything else my colleagues wanna add? All right, seeing no further comment, I move for passage.
Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
That's all I have in my committees.
Thank you, Chair Brown. The next committee to come before council is the Public Service and Transportation Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Remy. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, President Harden. Tonight I have ordinance number two five nine five twenty eighteen, to authorize the city's chief innovation officer to enter into contract with Clean Fuels Ohio for the purpose of distributing rebate funds in connection with the Smart Columbus Transportation Network Company Electric Vehicle Rebate Program, to authorize the expenditure of up to one hundred and twenty thousand for this program from the Smart City Private Grant Fund and to declare an emergency. This legislation authorizes the establishment of a contract with Clean Fuels Ohio and the expenditure of one hundred and twenty thousand within the Smart City Private Grant Fund for, to issue rebates for the Transportation Network Company Electric Vehicle Rebates Program. Ordinance number nineteen oh one twenty seventeen, authorize the Public Service Director to transfer signature authority of the chief innovation officer, of the chief innovation officer's designee, or the chief designation, chief innovation officer's designee for all past, present, and future Smart Columbus Smart City Challenge Paul G. Allen Family Foundation contracts, documents, and projects. Let's see. In two thousand sixteen, the City of Columbus, acting through the Department of Public Service, pursued and won a ten million dollar grant from the Paul G. Allen Family Foundation in connection with the Smart City Challenge sponsored by the U.S. Department of Transportation. The purpose of that award is to enable the city to lay a practical path to replace carbon-based fuel consumption through critical system improvements that increase safety, reduce carbon emissions, and enhance mobility. Hundred and twenty thousand was budgeted within the plan to reimburse transportation network companies up to three thousand dollars for purchase of qualifying plug-in electric vehicle, plug-in electric vehicle known as the TNC Electric Vehicles Rebate Program. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues this evening? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Next, I have ordinance number twenty-eight forty-one twenty eighteen, to amend the twenty eighteen capital improvement budget to appropriate funds within the Federal Transportation Grants Fund, to authorize the transfer of funds within the Streets and Highways Bond Fund, to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into contract with Strauser Paving Company for the pedestrian safety improvements, Bens Borough's Safe Routes to Schools Project, to authorize the expenditure of up to two hundred and forty-seven thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty-six cents from the Federal Transportation Grants Fund, and up to two hundred and thirty-six thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars and nineteen cents from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund for the project and to declare an emergency. This ordinance authorized the Director of Public Service to enter into contract with Strauser Paving Company through the city's bid process for the pedestrian safety improvements, Bens Borough's PID ninety-four oh fourteen project, and to provide payment for construction, construction administration, and inspection services. This contract will construct new sidewalks along the east side of Bens Boulevard from approximately four hundred and ten feet north of South Stevens Drive to the existing sidewalk at the intersection of Ekin Road, and along the west side of Bens Boulevard from South Stevens Drive north to the existing sidewalk, and other work as may be necessary to complete, complete the contract in accordance with the plans and specifications set forth in the bid submittal documents. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues this evening? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Next, I have ordinance number twenty-eight fifty-three twenty eighteen, to authorize the city attorney to file complaints in order to immediately appropriate and accept the remaining fee simple and lesser real estate necessary to timely complete the arterial street rehabilitation James Road Public Improvement Project. The city's Department of Public Service is performing arterial street rehabilitation on James Road Public Improvement Project. The city must acquire certain fee simple title and lesser real estate located in the vicinity of James Road and Livingston Avenue in order for DPS to timely complete the project, the public project. The city passed ordinance number sixteen seventeen twenty fourteen, authorizing the city attorney to acquire the real estate. Furthermore, the city also adopted resolutions zero two nine six X twenty seventeen and zero one two five X twenty eighteen, establishing the city's intent to appropriate the real estate. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues this evening? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Next, I have ordinance number twenty-eight sixty-four twenty eighteen, to authorize the transfer of appropriation from object class zero three to object class zero six in the amount of eight hundred and forty thousand dollars within the Smart City Grant Fund, to amend the twenty eighteen capital improvement budget, to authorize the chief innovation officer to execute a professional services contract with M-Tech Solutions LLC relative to the Smart Columbus Multimodal Trip Planning Application Project, to authorize the expenditure of up to eight hundred and forty thousand from the Smart City Grant Fund, to authorize the expenditure of sixty thousand from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund, and to declare an emergency. This legislation authorizes the chief innovation officer to enter into a professional services contract with M-Tech Solutions, hereafter referenced as M-Tech, in an amount of up to nine hundred thousand dollars for the purchase of a new application environment for the execution of multimodal transportation, known as the Multimodal Trip Planning Application for end-to-end multimodal trip execution. The Smart City Challenge is a U.S. Department of Transportation grant program seeking to create a fully integrated, first-of-its-kind city that uses data, technology, and creativity to shape how people and goods move in the future. In two thousand sixteen, the City of Columbus, acting through the Department of Public Service, applied for and won the Smart City Challenge, receiving a forty million dollar grant from the U.S. Department of Transportation, and ten million dollar grant from the Paul G. Allen Family Foundation. As part of Columbus's overall response to the Smart City Challenge, efforts were focused on how an integrated, smart transportation system would encourage the use of multimodal trips. Increasingly, citizens in urban areas view mobility as a service and expect seamless connections as they move from mode to mode. The MMTPA project will provide this functionality and improve upon the existing functionality, functionality currently available to users. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Next, I have ordinance number twenty-nine twenty-three twenty eighteen, to amend the twenty eighteen capital improvement budget to authorize a transfer of up to one hundred thousand dollars within the Electricity General Obligation Bond Fund, to authorize the Director of Public Service to pay utility relocation costs to various utilities for the Downtown Streetscape Short North Sid High Street Improvements Phase Two and Downtown Streetscape Short North Sid High Street Improvements Phase Three projects, to authorize the expenditure of up to three million, three, nine hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for utility relocations for this project from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund, and from the Electricity General Obligation Bond Fund, and to declare an emergency. This legislation authorizes payment for utility relocation work by American Electric Power, Columbus FiberNet, Spectrum, Verizon, WOW, and other utilities as needed in an amount of up to three million nine hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. The Public Service Department is engaged in the Downtown Streetscape Short North Sid High Street Improvements Phase Two and Downtown Streetscape Short North Sid High Street Improvements Phase Three projects. Project work includes roadway and streetscape improvements to North High Street from Poplar Avenue to King East Seventh Avenue. Project improvements include sidewalk on both sides of High Street, planar beds, and street trees, light and signal upgrades, storm improvements, and undergrounding of both private and public overhead utilities. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Next, I have ordinance number twenty-nine thirty-three twenty eighteen, to amend the twenty eighteen capital improvement budget to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into a contract modification with Arcatus US Inc. in connection with the UIRF Milo Grogan Second Avenue Improvements Project, to authorize the expenditure of up to two hundred and sixty-four thousand from the Streets and Highway Bond Fund for the project and to declare an emergency. This legislation authorizes the Director of Public Service to modify a professional services contract with Arcatus US Inc. to add additional funds of two hundred and sixty-four thousand for design of the UIRF Milo Grogan Second Avenue Improvements. Ordinance number zero four five, four six five twenty seventeen, authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into a professional services contract with Arcatus US Inc. for the UIRF Milo Grogan Second Avenue Improvements Project. The contract is to produce construction plans and associated deliverables for improvements to East Second Avenue from Sixth Street to St. Clair Avenue. Improvements will generally consist of new previous payments in the parking lane of Second Avenue, resurfacing the remaining existing pavement, replacing the existing curb and installation of curb extensions to define the parking areas. Streetscape improvements will consist of replacement of existing sidewalks, new street trees, and new street lighting with underground circuit. The signals at Cleveland Avenue and St. Clair Avenue will be modified to accommodate the proposed improvements. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Reamie, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Next, I have ordinance number 2972-2018 to amend the 2018 capital improvement budget to appropriate funds within the Federal Transportation Grants Fund and within the Street and Highway Improvement Non-Bond Fund, to authorize the Director of Public Service to pay utility relocation costs to various utilities for the arterial street rehabilitation Hamilton Road 161 to Morris Road Phase A project, to authorize the expenditure of up to $2 million for utility relocations for this project from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund, the Federal Transportation Grants Fund, and the Street and Highway Improvement Non-Bond Fund, and to declare an emergency. This legislation authorizes payment for utility relocation work by American Electric Power, Columbia Gas of Ohio, Marathon Pipeline, and other utilities as needed in an amount of up to $2 million. The Public Service Department is engaged in the arterial street rehabilitation Hamilton Road 161 to Morris Road Phase A project. Project work includes widening Hamilton Road to provide an additional through lane in each direction between Morris Road and Preserve Crossing. Morris Road between Hamilton and Trellis will also be improved to include a center turn lane. Project improvements include curb, gutter, storm sewer, sidewalk, street lighting, traffic control devices, and street trees. Are there any questions from my colleagues this evening? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Reamie, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Next, I have ordinance 2979-2018 to amend the 2018 capital improvement budget to appropriate and transfer funds within the Development taxable Bond Fund, to transfer funds within the Streets and Highways Bond Fund, and within the Water General Obligation Bond Fund, to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into a construction contract with Shelley &amp; Sands Inc. for the State Route 315 at North Broadway Area Infrastructure Improvements Project, to authorize the expenditure of up to $24,477,734.66 to pay for the contract and construction administration and inspection, and to declare an emergency. This ordinance authorizes the Director of Public Service to enter into contract with Shelley &amp; Sands Inc. for the State Route 315 at North Broadway Area Infrastructure Improvements Project and to provide payment for construction, construction administration, and inspection services. This contract consists of improvements at State Route 315 at the North Broadway Olentangy River Road interchange and the surrounding local roadways. The overall limits of the project are the northernmost Coles driveway at the south end of Olentangy River Road, the State Route 315 southbound entrance ramp from eastbound North Broadway in the west, approximately 500 feet north of Thomas Lane on the north, and the North Broadway Ohio Health Parkway intersection on the east. Work on State Route 315 is from the overpass over Olentangy River Road to the beginning of the southbound exit lane to Thomas Lane Olentangy River Road. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Reamie, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Next, I have ordinance number 3018-2018 to amend the 2018 capital improvement budget to appropriate funds within the Federal Transportation Grants Fund and the Transportation Grants Fund, to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into contract with Double Z Construction Company for the roadway improvements Lizelle Road Phase C project, to authorize the expenditure of up to $5,742,938.6 from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund, the Federal Transportation Grants Fund, and the Transportation Grants Fund for the project, and to declare an emergency. This ordinance authorizes the Director of Public Service to enter into contract with Double Z Construction Company through the city's bid process for the roadway improvements Lizelle Road Phase C PID 95607 project and to provide payment for construction, construction administration, and inspection services. This contract includes reconstruction, resurfacing, and widening of Lizelle Road from Sankus to Worthington Woods Boulevard, including side streets. Improvements will include sidewalks, shared used path, water lines, storm sewer, and other work as may be necessary to complete the contract in accordance with the plans and specifications set forth in the bid submittal documents. The estimated notice to proceed date is December 10, 2018. The contract has a completion date of September 30, 2021. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues this evening? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Reamie, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Next, I have ordinance 3025-2018 to amend the 2018 capital improvement budget to authorize the appropriation of funds and a transfer of cash within the Street and Highway Improvement Non-Bond Fund, to authorize the Director of Public Service to reimburse various property owners for the replacement of concrete curbs, to authorize the expenditure of up to $50,000 for reimbursement for this project from the Street and Highway Improvement Non-Bond Fund and to declare an emergency. This legislation authorizes the expenditure of up to $50,000 to establish funding to repay various property owners for costs associated with the construction of new concrete curbs. The Division of Infrastructure Management is responsible for curb replacement within the city's city limits. Deteriorated curb is typically replaced by the city when a street is resurfaced. As it can be many years between resurfacing of the same street, the city has a program to reimburse property owners that do not want to wait for their street to be resurfaced for the curb to be replaced. Reimbursement occurs subsequent to inspection of the new curb by the city. The majority of these replacements occur while the property owners are constructing new sidewalk, which are ordinarily the property owner's responsibility to maintain and/or replace. The Division of Infrastructure Management requires funding for the cost-effective and beneficial program to improve curbs in the city. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Brown, Page, Reamie, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Next, I have ordinance 3040-2018 to appropriate funds within the Federal Transportation Grants Fund, to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into contract with Shelley &amp; Sands for the Intersection Improvements Livingston Avenue at Barnett Road Project, to authorize the expenditure of up to $1,304,035.13 from the Federal Transportation Grants Fund and the Streets and Highways Bond Fund for the project and to declare an emergency. This ordinance authorizes the Director of Public Service to enter into contract with Shelley &amp; Sands Inc. for the Intersection Improvements Livingston Avenue at Barnett Road Project and to provide payment for construction, construction administration, and construction inspection services. This contract includes improvement of the Livingston Avenue and Barnett Road intersection by replacement of the traffic signal, modification of the Barnett Road profile, addition of northbound and southbound dedicated left turn lanes and sidewalk along Barnett Road, improvement of drainage by replacement of the storm sewer, and addition of a dry detention basin, and other work as may be necessary to complete the contract in accordance with the plans and specifications set forth in the bid submittal documents. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Brown, Page, Reamie, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
And finally, this evening in Public Service and Transportation, I have ordinance number 3097-2018 to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into a professional services contract with HNTB Ohio Inc. for the Traffic Signal Installation Columbus Traffic Signal System Phase F Project, to authorize the expenditure of up to $2,400,000 from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund to pay for this contract and to declare an emergency. This legislation authorizes the Director of Public Service to enter into professional services contract with HNTB Ohio Inc. in the amount of $2,400,000 for the Traffic Signal Installation Columbus Traffic Signal System Phase F Project. The intent of this project is to provide the City of Columbus Department of Public Service additional resources to design the Columbus Traffic Signal System Phase F and assistance with system integration during the migration of the existing Columbus Traffic Signal System to an open architecture that can serve central Ohio stakeholders with system connectivity and interoperability. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Reamie, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
And that's all I have in Public Service and Transportation. With your permission, I'll move on to Administration.
Please.
Thank you very much. Tonight in Administration, I have ordinance number 2556-2018 to authorize the Human Resources Director to modify and increase the existing contract with Aon Hewitt Consulting to include performing a pharmacy benefit manager audit, to authorize the additional expenditure of $60,000 from the Employee Benefits Fund or so much thereof as may be necessary to pay the cost of an audit, to waive the competitive bidding requirements to the Columbus City Codes, and to declare an emergency. The Director of Human Resources seeks the authority to modify and increase the current contract with Aon Hewitt Consulting Services to allow the firm to conduct a financial audit of the city's Financial Benefit Manager OptumRx. The city entered into contract with this firm earlier this year per ordinance number 017-2018 to provide the Employee Benefits Risk Management Office with general benefits consulting services, as well as assistance in selecting employee healthcare plan administrators. At that time, specifics of the prescription drug audit were unknown. Once details and time requirements of the audit were reviewed, new staff was in place, and the need to contract with a firm with extensive institutional knowledge and experience of the city's six prescription drug plans was needed. I'm going to turn the floor over momentarily to Director Brandon to speak a little bit on this ordinance, if you would.
Sure. Thank you. Good evening, President Harden, Chairman Reamie, and members of council. This is the first time in recent history that the city has conducted an audit of the city's Pharmacy Benefit Manager, OptumRx. We are seeking your approval to modify the existing contract with Aon Hewitt Consulting to include the performance of this audit. Aon Hewitt has a great deal of institutional knowledge of contract specifics to conduct the audit. In addition, Aon purchased a subsidiary last year that is essentially a pharmacy benefit manager auditing firm, making them uniquely qualified to conduct this audit. The scope of services include a prescription drug pricing audit and a prescription drug rebate audit. The auditing period is for the contract year beginning February 1, 2017 through January 31, 2018. Thank you all for your favorable consideration. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you very much, Director Brandon. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues this evening? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Reamie, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Finally, last but certainly not least, I'd like to invite President of the International Association of Firefighters Local 67, Mr. Dave Montgomery, to the podium, along with Vice President John Capretta and Mark Seamer. Gary, I see you back there. All of you guys, if you'd like to come on up as I introduce ordinance number 3190-2018 to accept the proposed collective bargaining agreement between the City of Columbus and the Columbus Firefighters Union Local 67, International Association of Firefighters IAFF Local 67, November 1, 2017 through October 31, 2020, to provide wages, hours, and other terms and conditions of employment for employees in the bargaining unit as provided in the attachment heretofore and to declare an emergency. There has been a great deal of hard work by all sides in effort to finalize this agreement, and I'm thankful we have reached this point. It's my pleasure to recognize the men and women of IAFF Local 67 for ratifying this contract. Since I have been on council, I've found the leadership of Dave Montgomery and John Capretta to be refreshing. Their leadership provides a sincere sense of reasonableness, compromise, and solution-driven thinking that will continue to push this great city forward. There were some issues of concern in this contract that needed to be addressed, but with their leadership, we were able to come up with equitable solutions that respect and reward our best-in-class first responders and also provides the city with ways to manage costs to allow for future growth. I would like to thank you for your leadership and look forward to our continued partnership in the years ahead. I will now turn the floor over to Dave Montgomery to share a few words.
Well, thank you for the kind words. I did write a little speech, but me reading a speech is boring, so I'll just speak off the cuff. We'd like to thank a few people. This is the part where I thank everybody, really. I'm going to do that right now. I'd like to thank the mayor's office. He indicated, the mayor indicated almost two years ago that, you know, we really had some concerns with healthcare, and that healthcare really is the driver. We felt that, you know, our team attacked the problem as if it was our own, because it is, because it's a shared partnership. We did a lot of homework. I will tell you that the collective bargaining agreement in itself, the process is not broken. It doesn't need fixing. This is a testament to how it worked. I will tell you that I'm proud of my team. John and Mark and Gary and the rest of the team really worked very hard, but, you know, you don't come to consensus or an agreement without both sides. I'll give credit to Nicky Brandon. Director Brandon did a nice job selecting a team. They worked real hard as well. We are faced with a difficult time, and coming to collaborative solutions is important. Ron Linville, Brooke Carnavala, Chris Moses, and the rest of the team really did. You know, it was a fair process. We met close to 30 times over 15 months, but I will tell you that they were honest, fair, tough negotiators, but I think we came to a consensus. I'd like to thank, really, their team for being truthful and being honest about solving some real problems that face not just the firefighters but the taxpayers as well. I'd like to thank Mr. Lombardi for finding the money to pay for it, and I'd like to thank council for approving it. So, I will tell you, the process itself does work. Collective bargaining does work if you work at it. So, thank you for the kind words, President Harden, and the rest of council. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Director Brandon, would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Thank you. I will say that you said a lot of what I was going to say, but I do have a little bit of a speech because I too have some people that I want to thank. But again, I thank council for the opportunity to speak on this and for your favorable consideration this evening. And while neither side secured all of their desired changes, the parties bargained in good faith with respect for the process and for each other. In the end, both parties are pleased with the terms that we were able to reach. I think we can all agree that this is the objective of collective bargaining, shaking hands on negotiated terms that will not only benefit the City of Columbus and its firefighters, but ultimately the citizens of this great city. The City of Columbus as an employer, as well as the citizens, can be assured the very best outcomes occur when labor and management are able to partner and work together. So, I thank your team for that. I'd also like to thank my team, the city's team. It was under the leadership of Ron Linville of Baker House Settler, Deputy Director Brooke Carnavale, Chris Moses, who's our city's Labor Relations Manager, and all who participated from the Department of Public Safety and the Department of Finance throughout this process. It was a long process, but I do think and I agree with President Montgomery that both sides respected each other in the process, and we're happy with the terms that we were able to come to. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much, Director Brandon. Would any of my colleagues like to say anything? President Harden.
Thank you, Chair Reamie. I'd like to thank you for your leadership as you shepherded this through and kept council abreast of what was going on. To Director Brandon, thank you for your leadership and for your team, for Ron Linville and everyone, but certainly to President Montgomery and the men of Local 67. Hearing about how you guys worked and brought ideas to the table, especially around this healthcare component, is something that I'm just very grateful for. It does show that the process works and shows a great example of how we, as a city, step up to say thank you for the work that you guys and women do every day in keeping us safe and for your advocacy for your families that you are working on. So, just grateful that we were able to get to where we are tonight, and I look forward to be in continued support of the great men and women of Local 67. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. If there are no other questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call the roll. Brown, Page, Reamie, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you very much, guys. Appreciate it. And that's all I have this evening in Administration.
Thank you, Chair Reamie. Can I get a motion for adjournment for recess? I apologize. Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Reamie, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass. Our recess. We will start zoning momentarily. Regular meeting number 60 will now come to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Reamie, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal? Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Reamie, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
We will now go to the zoning committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs this committee. All members serve on the committee. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Before beginning the zoning agenda, I'll briefly explain the rules of council as pertaining to speaking before council on zonings and variances. We permit three speakers on each side, three proponents, three opponents, and we ask that they limit their remarks to three minutes on each side, and we provide an opportunity for rebuttal from the applicant. On the advice of the city attorney's office, we ask that anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against any council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand, and be... raise your right hand, and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will.
I will.
Thank you. The first ordinance is 3021, 2018, to rezone 7488 Lee Road to being 81.92 acres located on the west side of Lee Road, 1,260 feet south of East Walnut Street from our rural district to PUD4 Planned Unit Development District. The applicant is Emily Holmes of Central Ohio LLC, care of Dave Hodge. The proposed use is a single-unit residential subdivision. The city department's recommendation is approval, and there is no area commission in this area. So first, I'm going to ask for staff presentation. Ms. Pine, the floor is yours.
Good evening. The site is undeveloped and used for agricultural purposes. The requested PUD4 Planned Unit Development District will allow construction of a single-unit residential subdivision comprised of 245 lots with 26.6 acres of provided open space, noting that the required open space is 3.45 acres. A small portion of this site is located within the boundaries of the Rocky Fork Black Lick Accord Plan, which recommends rural residential land uses for this location. This portion is also located within the boundaries of the Rocky Fork Black Lick Accord Implementation Panel. However, the Planning Division staff did not require this application to go before the panel, so a recommendation has not been rendered. The majority of the site is not within a planning area, but is adjacent to the planning areas of the Rocky Fork Black Lick Accord and the Northland Plan Volume 1 area plans. Planning Division staff utilize these plans in formulating their recommendation. The Development Text commits to a site plan and includes density and setback requirements, site access provisions, landscaping, exterior building material commitments, and graphics controls. The proposed development is compatible with adjacent residential developments, provides buffering from streets and adjacent lots, and provides future connectivity through the site with the use of stub streets. The site also preserves a significant amount of open space and tree stands, and the open space effectively functions as an organizational element as recommended by both the Rocky Fork Black Lick Accord and Northland Plan Volume 2. Therefore, staff's recommendation is for approval, and I would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pine. Any questions for Ms. Pine this time? No. Seeing none, I'm going to ask for a presentation from the applicant or representative of the applicant.
Good evening. President Harden, Chair Tyson, members of council, my name is David Hodge. I'm the attorney for the applicant, M.I. Holmes of Central Ohio, and congratulations, Ms. Page, Mr. Stenziano, on your recent election. You will be missed. I didn't vote for you because I didn't want you to leave council. I'm just kidding. I did. Thank you for the opportunity to be before you this evening with this rezoning request. This property annexes into the City of Columbus from Blendon Township, and Blendon Township has long been interested in this property. Through the years, I've been out to talk with folks in Blendon Township, and they worked very hard to try to figure out a way to provide services to this property, and they weren't able to do that. So ultimately, the only option for the development of this property was to annex it into the City of Columbus, which happened in two separate phases. In preparation for the meeting this evening, I went and took a look at some of the other Columbus development that has happened out in this corridor, specifically to the south and the southeast, and the developments that have occurred there, the residential developments that have occurred there have done so at various densities, 4.74 units an acre, 4.69 units an acre, 3.89 units an acre, and 3.1 units an acre. We're here this evening with an application that is below 3. It's a 2.9 dwelling units an acre, and it does have 32.1% of the overall properties being open space. In the planning process for this, we worked very hard with the city planners to achieve the right setbacks, to achieve the right open space maintenance, to introduce a tot lot. We also engaged in a required traffic impact study, both with the city's Public Service Department, as well as the Franklin County Engineers, and the result of that traffic impact study is there will be road improvements out here. And we know that with development, there is often an issue that neighbors have with traffic, and so we are addressing that, we're mitigating that. We have turn lanes here on Lee Road. We're working on a pretty significant improvement that I believe the city has already funded to the south at Central College and Lee Road. We also inserted at the city's request some language in this text that says that only 50 homes here can develop until such time as that improvement to the south is actually in place. Well, what the text says is we will reevaluate at that time where that improvement is, whether that improvement is installed, before the remainder of the development can happen. So, that's all done to be responsible for the increase in traffic that results with any development and to make improvements to the infrastructure to mitigate that. We are thankful, because of our hard work with planning, that we are here with a city planning recommendation of approval. Again, that was very hard work to get the plan just right to ultimately earn that recommendation. We believe that this is going to provide a great opportunity for young families. These are smaller lots. This is less maintenance. This is 50, 54, and 60-foot lots, a tot lot here, a trail system throughout to provide a great place for young families to live. You know, one of the hardest jobs that a zoning attorney ever has is changing the farm field next door into a subdivision. I've been at this a while, and I've seen this time and time again, and I understand it. And folks that live out here, they prefer to see the farm field next door. We've tried to be sensitive. We've been out throughout this process to meet with neighbors. Each of those meetings has resulted in the creation of buffers and setbacks and additional landscaping, all of which is committed to, all of which is in this text, all of which is on this site plan. I could probably go on. Maybe I'll stop there, and I'll do my best to answer any questions.
Any questions? Councilmember Stenziano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just curious what community outreach or engagement occurred during the process. Thank you.
Sure. With this one, as Ms. Pine mentioned, there is no area commission out here. It's right on the edge of the Rocky Fork Black Lick Accord Panel, so the process didn't dictate any area commission meetings. However, M.I. Holmes, Josh Barkin's with me, in case anybody wants him to come up from M.I., went out many, many occasions and met with the surrounding property owners, and each of those meetings did result in either a plan revision or the addition of some pretty significant landscape buffers, specifically locations on this plan where that resulted. We came in and we did additional landscaping here. We brought the lots off of the shared property line here to create a buffer, additional landscaping here. We committed to additional landscaping here, as well as on the south. And all of those are itemized and specifically committed to in our development text and also on the landscape plan, which is in the legislation before you this evening.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, I'll now ask, we do have three speakers on this legislation. The first speaker is Kyle Johnson. As you come towards the podium, please state your name, who you represent, and you have three minutes, and he is against this ordinance. The floor is yours.
To introduce, this is my neighbor Donna. She's going to hold the mat for me as I point items out. My name is Kyle Johnson. I am living at 4575 East Walnut Street. I represent the neighbors who are opposed to the density of this development. I'd like to offer a couple of counterpoints to Mr. Hodge's points. He mentioned that the density is around 2.9 acres. That includes the green space. When you exclude the green space, these houses are actually about 3.4 homes per acre. Improvements to the road that are being suggested, proposed, are inadequate, in my opinion. That basically what I've read from the traffic study is that a turn lane will have to be added on Lee Road, and that turn lane will not be adequate in solving the problems on Central College that back up from people trying to turn south on Sunbury. So, another counterpoint, you know, he said we'd prefer to look at farm fields, of course, but we also would prefer to look at sensible development as opposed to this unsensible high-density development. As far as the outreach prior, Mr. Stenziano, we don't feel that we had adequate notice. There were no signs posted in the farm fields. There was no mention from Blendon Township. There was no mention from the City of Columbus. A small percentage of neighbors received notice of the zoning department meeting, and the same percentage saw the notice for tonight. So, I'm here, I'm representing the neighbors that are opposed to this density specifically. We're not opposed to the development. We're opposed to the density. We think this is too much for our area. We think it's unsustainable. We think it's unsensible. And if I just have everyone that is here tonight just stand just momentarily, just so the city council can see, you know, this, who this, they made an effort, took work off early to come down here, because this matters to them. So, I want to talk quickly about drainage. You know, they're saying, M.I. representatives are saying that drainage is going to be taken care of. They're confident they're going to be able to get the water away from their property. That doesn't answer another concern that we have about, you know, runoff going into Hoover Reservoir. This property ultimately drains to Hoover Reservoir. That is the main drinking water of Columbus, as you know. So, we've got fertilizer, contaminants, pathogens that's going to be draining into the Hoover Reservoir. We also want to bring up the concern about well water. Most of the residents on our block, so that's Central College, Walnut Street, Lee, and I'm sorry, Cabbage, are on well water. Some of us are on Delco, but we're worried that this development might affect the water table, might de-water wells, and cause our residents, our neighbors, to have to hook up to Delco, and that's not cheap, especially in our area. So, that being said, I just want to point out the lowland. This is down here. All through here is very low. This is the lowest point in the 400 acres that is surrounded by Walnut Street, Lee Road, Central College, and Cabbage over here. This is all the lowland. It drains underneath of Delina's Barn, through this creek, and into Hoover Reservoir. So, this, any, may I continue with my last sentence? Thank you. So, any drainage solution that M.I. will have to propose, in order to get this fixed, will have to account for the additional runoff from the impervious structure and impervious materials in this dense development. We feel that if the neighborhood was less dense, there'd be less additional runoff and that, you know, we wouldn't have to worry about, we just want to make sure the drainage is taken care of. We're very concerned about that, obviously. So, we have neighbors who are already flooding in their yards, and the impervious, the amount, the insane amount of impervious material here.
So, you state your statement.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Donna Rouge. Good evening. I guess state your name and who you represent, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Donna Rouge, and I reside at 4555 Catella Drive, where the rear of my property borders the proposed rezoning area. I personally sent an email to each of you last Friday, and this evening, I am here to present the surrounding neighbors. We are here to ask the council to either retain the R1 zoning, to change to LR1, or to table the request. The surrounding neighbors recognize the concept of progress through development. Our main concern is not the prospect of new neighbors, but the proposed density of the development. The current proposal requests a PUD4 zoning area allowing approximately four houses per acre. This is in stark contrast to the existing properties. A high-level overview of the surrounding area results in 395 acres with 108 houses, which is approximately one house per four acres. The current proposal of 244 houses on 90 acres results in 3.4 houses per acre, excluding the green space. This is a 1,260% increase for one house per four acres, and compared to the existing density, the PUD4 is a 1,500% increase. The surrounding area sustainability concern related to density was also recognized by Dr. Maria Conroy, an O.C. professor in the City and Regional Planning Section, whose expertise is in sustainable development. As a Development Commission member, she rejected the rezoning proposal due to the high density. The neighbors are requesting council members to deny the current proposal and request M.I. Holmes to repropose one house per acre lot, which is more sustainable with the houses along the existing roads surrounding the property. The typical lot size for those houses is one acre or slightly more, especially along Lee Road and Catella Drive. The high density also leads to emergency response concerns and the impact of the surrounding jurisdictions of plain and Blendon Township, even though the planned development is under the City of Columbus jurisdiction. The residents are concerned about the impact to the Blendon Township Police Departments and even the West Royal Blendon Fire Departments, as they are likely to assist the City of Columbus in responding to the new development. In closing, I encourage you to reject the current proposal of 244 houses on 90 acres and request M.I. Holmes to repropose the development with one house per one acre lot. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. And the final speaker is Brett Shellhammer. Good evening, and state your name, who you represent. He's also against this legislation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Brett Shellhammer, and I reside at 7318 Lee Road. I'm here to ask the council to either retain the current R1 zoning, change to LR1, which maintains the current lot size in the area, or table the request from M.I. Holmes until careful consideration of the proposed changes on the rural nature of the area have greater involvement of local residents in discussion and decisions. Limited announcements of the proposed changes were made, and only to some residents. No signs of the proposed zoning changes were posted on either of the properties involved. The community does welcome new homes to the area if done in a sensible manner that aligns with the current surrounding lot sizes, including the current lots on Cabbage, Walnut, and Lee, which on average are an acre or more per parcel. Yesterday, during our town meeting, we identified concerns such as infrastructure, traffic patterns, drainage, water and sewer agreements, safety of pedestrians retrieving their mail, large volume of bicyclists, police and fire protection, increased light pollution, impact on the environment, and wild animal populations, snow removal, and the schools. I'm prepared to discuss the following areas related to the traffic, which include excessive speeding, mailbox placement, and adequate lane size. While we appreciate the traffic impact study performed and the recommendations made by Mr. Daniel Moorhead on behalf of Franklin County Engineers' Office to require the developer to make reasonable improvements, it does not address things such as mailbox placement. Residents living on the north side of Walnut, as well as residents living on the east side of Lee, are required to cross the street to access mailboxes. This is already, this is a safety concern for those residents, and increased traffic will only make those matters worse. We are recommending that all mailboxes are located to either side of the road where the houses are located. An attendee yesterday shared a story of a property that they sold to an elderly couple where the mailbox was placed on the other side of the road. He later heard that elderly man had been struck and killed by a passing motorist while retrieving his mail, an unfortunate and unnecessary loss of life. As a father with an 18-month-old and a seven-year-old, this is my nightmare. Young children are naturally curious and inclined to follow and imitate their parents. If such a tragic and unnecessary event of a motorist hitting one of my children was to occur as a result of this development, each of you would indirectly be responsible for this loss by not making the recommended changes of mailbox relocation. Inadequate lane size is another piece that we're also experiencing. There, it's common for individuals to be running up and down Cabbage, bicyclists being on the road, training for the Pelotania. There are currently no shoulders or bicycle lanes present. The projected increase will, traffic poses a risk for the safety of a large number of cyclists and pedestrians. In closing, can I finish my last statement, please? Thank you. In closing, I ask that you reconsider the annexation of the land from a PUD4 to a more sensible number. This will not only humanely demonstrate that the City of Columbus and its council has the best intentions for its residents and those of the surrounding townships, but can also help to create the blueprint for how compromise can be reached, which allows for the growth and development of certain areas without taking away from the current residents' quality of life. quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brickhammer. I have a couple of questions. You want to come back? So, right now, this is a rural district area, right?
Yes.
And you just mentioned about the mailboxes.
Yes.
And so that's not part of the City of Columbus right now, correct?
I would not be inclined to answer, I would not be able to answer that. Is that a federal, is that United States Postal Service?
Well, I'm not asking, I'm just asking the question, you know. I do understand that the mailboxes are there. I don't want to make a big issue of this, but you were just mentioning that where the mailboxes are currently located, and I just wanted to make sure that that currently is not within the City of Columbus. This is in a rural area.
Yes, that's correct.
Correct, correct. So, I also just want to ask, so I know that the Development Commission did vote on this, and that were, it was four to, four to one. And so, did you, or, I don't know if you speak for everyone, but you are saying, you're speaking for your neighbors, but I'm just wondering if any, did you ever go to, did you go to the Development Commission meeting in September, September 13th, to raise these issues?
Unfortunately, I did not have the privilege to raise these issues. There were, including myself, a number of local residents that did not receive proper notification. I did call and follow a complaint as much as able. So, I would be inclined to believe that there's other individuals that would happily speak and state that they did not receive a notification as well.
Looks like Mr. Johnson, he raised his hand. Did you receive a notification? Did you go to the meeting, Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, I was there, yeah.
All right.
I did not receive notes, but I did go to the meeting.
Okay, so you did go to the meeting.
And it was from my understanding, for those that, the small sample that did attend, that the measure was to be tabled until, I guess it was more heavily pursued from the MI attorney to push it forward, meaning that there really wasn't a lot of time to elaborate on the topic. The intention from the committee, from my understanding, was to table it. Unfortunately, that did not end up happening.
Right, so, I understand that, so there was an impression that from the community it was going to be tabled, but certainly they were voting on it, and they voted, as I must mention, four to, four yeses and one commissioner against it, correct?
Correct.
And I was just saying that because I know the previous speaker mentioned just the no vote and didn't mention other one commissioner and did not mention the four votes from the other commissioners. So, Councilmember Sensiano, do you have a question for Mr. Shellhammer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just curious, so you mentioned there was a meeting last night. Have those concerns been conveyed to MI? Because as we heard from their representative, they've responded to the concerns they heard through the process. And so just wondering what's been conveyed and when. I know there wasn't much runway between last night's meeting and today, but are those issues been conveyed?
They're selective issues that MI has chosen to respond to in what would be deemed as not requiring a reconstruction, reconfiguration of the current planned development. Yes, they have in terms of adding regress, adding additional green areas, but that is not the main concerns that have been addressed. Those are the minor underlying, you know, I have something in my backyard now, what can you do for me? The true spirit, the true nature of the meeting yesterday was truly, there's, I can't tell you how many people. I've lived there for just under six months. There probably been, I would say, there's probably close to 30 of those people have been there for 20 or 30 years. And this is where they grew up, this is where they've had children. This is, they've, they've lived there because this is the lifestyle that they've chosen to live. And unfortunately, they were never given an opportunity or given a, I guess, a better platform because of the way that the previous issue was pushed through to, I guess, voice their concerns. I do notice that there was three committee members that did question or address the density of the number of units, which, again, we're not opposed to development. What we are opposed to is the density of the development.
And thank you, we've heard that. So what we'll do now is we're going to let the applicant come back to the podium based upon the, based upon the concerns of the three speakers. They'll have an opportunity to respond. We'll also, if there's any other questions that the develop, that, that the applicant cannot answer, we do have staff here to be able to answer some of the questions also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just to address several of the items raised by the three speakers in opposition, the density was, was probably the item that was mentioned the most. And as I mentioned in my remarks, the density here is 2.9 dwelling units an acre. This does preserve about 33% of the total in open, in open spaces. It's a cluster development. Within that open space, it becomes usable open space with trails and a tot lot so that folks don't have a lot to maintain on their property but can get out in community association, maintain open space, and get on trails and walking paths. In terms of the drainage, any of the stormwater here that's going to be generated by the development, this site will be fully engineered, and we will meet the City of Columbus's stormwater manual, which is a very strict stormwater manual. All of the stormwater here will be held on-site. It'll be treated for both quality and quantity before it is then released back into the watershed. So the stormwater here on-site is maintained. We also believe that in terms of engineering the property with some, with some failed storm tiles, et cetera, that we are going to improve some of the stormwater condition of regional properties around the, around the perimeter here. In terms of folks' wells, certainly, we will stand out in the hall after this meeting and talk with people. If we, if MI, if their development impacts a well, which we do not think is going to happen, but if MI does impact a well, we would like to be involved monitoring the well, and MI will come out and fix it at their cost. We don't want to be in the business of affecting anybody's ability to have potable water to their house. So we, we make that commitment here to the neighbors and to council this evening. The traffic impact study, again, that was done in conjunction with the city's public service department, the Franklin County Engineer. These guys are professionals, and measures are going to be taken in the public right of way to mitigate the development that happens here, both short-term and long-term. MI has a, has a long-term proven track record of working cooperatively, not just with the City of Columbus, but all local governments to be responsible in terms of infrastructure improvements all over. So, you know, folks can debate what is sensible development. We believe this is sensible development. It is less dense than much of the development to the south and southeast. It's cluster development, it's environmentally sensitive, and it provides a great place for, hopefully, young families to live. So, if there are questions, I'll do my best to answer them and would respectfully request a positive vote on this legislation this evening.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You said it's less dense than the properties on the south and the southeast.
Correct.
What's the density of those, again?
So, those vary. I spent a little time pulling up the zoning map today. They, there's a development that's at 4.7 dwelling units an acre, one that's at 4.6 dwelling units an acre, one that's at 3.8, one that's at 3.1, we are at 2.9. We, we started out with this knowing that we were going to come in and not request anything greater than three dwelling units an acre. And as I mentioned previously, this was heavily discussed with your planning division, and that's where we started and worked within that parameter all along.
And those more dense air developments?
Yes.
Are they as, as massive as this? Are they much smaller? You know, I mean, just density or not, 244, right?
Sure, they are, they are, from an acreage perspective, they are comparably sized to what's being proposed here.
Okay. And how did you, or MI, choose the 2.9 number? What guided your proposal density-wise, you know, knowing that there would be neighbors nearby who wanted less density?
Sure, and that's always, that's always something that a developer needs to think through, and certainly it came forward after a study of what was done in the past to the south and the southeast, in an effort to distinguish this from those, and frankly, in an effort to be successful in our, in our development proposal through the process.
Councilmember Remy.
Thank you. You mentioned in your presentation that 50 homes would be built before, and that would be it until the roadway improvements were made.
Correct.
Which portion of the project, I'm sorry, I missed it potentially, and do you know when the roadway improvements are scheduled to be completed?
So, the road, the portion of the road that, that is, that has a bottleneck is down here to the south at Lee and Central College. And what we've said is that, that no greater than 50 homes will be constructed here until that improvement is done, or after 50 homes are done, we reassess with, with our traffic engineer, the city's traffic engineers, Franklin County's traffic engineers, and see where we are. Maybe other things can be done to mitigate the increase. In terms of the phasing of this, which I think is your question, I don't know the answer. I could bring, I could bring Mr. Barkin up from MI to answer that. I don't know where the phase lines are and exactly where those homes would, would go initially.
Thank you very much.
Attorney Hodge, I know that the question keeps up about this density. And so, I, and the speakers of all that stepped to the podium said it was 3.4. Do you know why that they are, that number is the number that they are, the three of them repeated when they came to the podium?
You know, I literally sat out in the hallway this evening before the meeting, and I, and I did the, the math, so dividing the acreage across 245 lots, and it, and it comes out to 2.9 units an acre. I think what the speaker mentioned is if you remove the open space, then you come up with a different density, and certainly that happens, but all of these, you know, cluster developments that, that, that provide on-site usable open space, if you took the, if you took that usable open space out, you would have a very different density. But across the entirety of this, with the acreage and the 245 lots, it is 2.9 dwelling units per acre.
I have another question. I don't know if you can answer this, but in regards to safety, the question was, you know, how are we going to handle, would the City of Columbus be, will it be, would this tax the City of Columbus Safety Division? And can either Ms. Pine, can you answer that question? I mean, I think that it probably will not, but can you answer that question?
We have not received any comments from the Department of Public Safety during this rezoning application. I know when it was under annexation, they basically have to say that they're able to service this property, and the intended use was disclosed at the time of the annexation.
Councilmember Page.
Thank you, Chair Tyson. And this may be a question for staff. For this particular property, which has already been annexed into the City of Columbus, the surrounding properties, are they Columbus as well or all township?
All of the properties around the northwest and south are in the township. There is a portion that was recently annexed along Lee Road that is now in, in the City of Columbus. It's not part of this application.
And could you briefly just discuss the annexation process and if there was any opportunity for public comment from Blendon Township as it was annexed into Columbus?
The annexation process is handled solely by the Department of Development Planning Division. Unfortunately, I'm not party to what the procedures are with that. I do know that they, that speakers could come and speak during the annexation process, but there's, there's, and probably at the township trustees meeting and at the county commissioners meeting.
That is correct. Surrounding owners are provided notification of the annexation. Letters are sent by law to each, each contiguous and adjacent property owner.
Thank you. Any other questions, my councilmembers? I guess the other question I'll just ask is about the mailboxes for safety. And are there any plans for where the mailboxes will be placed in this development, and there were concerns about that?
The mailboxes here will be internal to the site off of, off of Lee and Walnut.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Seeing now there are no further questions from my council colleagues, I would move to amend, first move to amend to emergency.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Remy, Sensiano, Tyson, President Harden.
Amended.
Thank you, and now move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Remy, Sensiano, Tyson, President Harden.
Ordinance is passed.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 3022-2018 to grant a variance in the provisions of Sections 3356.03 permitted uses, 3311.28B requirements, 3312.21AB landscaping and screening, 3312.29 parking spaces, 3312.41 access and circulation, 3312.49 minimum number of parking spaces required, 3365.17C location requirements, 3372.404D setback requirements, and 3372.609A parking and circulation of the Columbus City Codes with property located at 80 East Cook Road to permit a brewery with reduced development standards in the C4 commercial district. The applicant is James W. Clark, Clark Associates. The proposed use is a brewery with off-site distribution and taproom. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Clintonville Area Commission's recommendation is 701. And first, and we do not have any speaker slips, I first move to amend to emergency.
Second.
Brown, Page, Remy, Sensiano, Tyson, President Harden.
Amended.
Thank you, and now move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Remy, Sensiano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 3060-2018 to rezon 5240 Walcott Road, being 22.78 acres located at the terminus of Walcott, 750 feet west of Walcott Road, from our rural district and LM2 limited manufacturing district to LM limited manufacturing district to declare an emergency. The applicant is Marvis Brothers Construction Care of Dave Perry. Proposed use is manufacturing uses, the City Department's recommendation is approval, and there is no area commission. There are no questions or comments from my colleagues. I first move to amend to emergency.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Remy, Sensiano, Tyson, President Harden.
Amended, sorry.
Thank you, and now move for passage.
Thank you, just a second. Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Remy, Sensiano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. To grant a, 3061-2018 to grant a variance in the provisions of Sections 3312.27 parking setback line, 3312.43 required surface for parking, and 3363.41A storage of the Columbus City Codes with property located at 5240 Walcott Court to permit reduced development standards for industrial development in the LM limited manufacturing district and to declare an emergency. The applicant is Marvis Brothers Construction Care of Dave Perry. Proposed use is heavy equipment sales and service facility. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and there is no area commission. I first move to, if there's no questions or comments, I move to amend to emergency.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Remy, Sensiano, Tyson, President Harden.
Amended.
Thank you, and now move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Remy, Sensiano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 3066.2018 to grant a variance in the provisions of Sections 3361.02 permitted uses, 3370.05 permitted uses of the Columbus City Codes with property located at 3435 Stelter Road to permit a medical research laboratory in the CPD Commercial Plan Development District and the LM Limited Manufacturing District. The applicant is Serpeta Therapeutics, Care of Attorney Jeffrey Brown. The proposed use is a medical research laboratory. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Northeast Air Commission's recommendation is approval, and it was unanimous. So first, I would move to waive second reading.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Remy, Sensiano, Tyson, President Harden.
Amended.
Thank you, and now move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Remy, Sensiano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 3071-2018 to grant a variance in the provisions of Sections 3356.03 C4 permitted uses, 3325.231AB setback requirements, 3325.281 parking and circulation, and 3372.604B setback requirements of the Columbus City Codes with property located at 2725 North High Street to permit a mixed-use development of the ground floor residential uses and reduced development standards in the C4 commercial district, commercial district. The applicant is BPGE Partners LLC, Care of Attorney Sean Mennel. The proposed use is a mixed-use development. The City Department's recommendation is approval. The Clintonville Air Commission's recommendation is approval, 701, and the University Air Commission's recommendation, can, can, University Air Commission's recommendation is 13... is thirteen to one. I am, there are no questions or comments. I move to waive second reading.
Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you, and now move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. The next ordinance is thirty-one oh-eight dash two thousand eighteen to grant a variance in the provisions of Sections thirty-three thirty-two point oh-three seven R two F residential district use, thirty-three twelve point four-nine minimum numbers of parking spaces required of the City of Columbus Codes for the property located at fifty East Columbus Street to permit a three, three-unit dwelling with reduced parking in the R two F residential district. The applicant is Bannon Park Resources LLC, care of attorney Jeffrey Brown. Proposed use is a three-unit dwelling. The city department's recommendation is approval. The Columbus South Side Air Commission's recommendation is twelve zero to one. If there are no questions or comments, I moved to waive second reading.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
And now I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read the ordinance numbers into the record of previously tabled legislation on the agenda tonight to be defeated?
Ordinance is zero nine five seven dash two thousand three, zero nine five nine dash two thousand three, zero nine six zero two thousand three, zero nine six one dash two thousand three, zero nine six three dash two thousand three, zero nine six five dash two thousand three, zero nine eight five dash two thousand three, zero nine eight six dash two thousand three, one seven one one dash two thousand four, one eight three six dash two, two thousand four, zero four zero three dash two thousand five, zero nine two three dash two thousand five, zero six two five dash two thousand six, one eight six seven dash two thousand six, one eight seven one dash two thousand six, zero one seven three dash two thousand seven, fifteen fifty-seven dash two thousand seven, zero eight, zero seven eight one dash two thousand eight, zero two four nine dash two thousand ten, zero seven eight six dash two thousand ten, zero two five seven dash two thousand twelve, zero three four five dash two thousand twelve, one 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 three dash two thousand twelve, two six nine two dash two thousand twelve, one seven six two dash twenty fifteen, and zero seven two eight dash twenty sixteen.
Thank you. May I have a motion to remove these items from the table?
Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
And now I move for passage and request a no vote.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Brown? Page? Remy? Stenziano? Tyson?
No.
President Harden?
No. These, these ordinances are not passed.
Thank you. And that's all I have in saying this evening.
Thank you, Chair Tyson. May I get a motion for adjournment of this meeting? Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Meeting is adjourned. We will resume meeting number fifty-three momentarily, or fifty-six, one of the meetings. Regular meeting number fifty-nine. Can I get a motion to reconvene, regular meeting number fifty-nine? Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Regular meeting number fifty-nine is reconvened. Next committee to come before council is the Economic Development and Small Business Committee. Councilmember Page chairs that committee. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. This evening in economic development and small business, we have ordinance thirty-one nineteen dash twenty eighteen to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into an economic development agreement with Futurity Holding LLC and Futurity Calling LLC to facilitate the redevelopment of a vacant medical office facility adjacent to Mount Carmel West into a mixed-use commercial office space consisting of approximately seventy-one thousand nine hundred square feet in West Franklinton and to declare an emergency. Headquartered in the City of Columbus, Futurity Holding LLC is a real estate holding company established in the fall of two thousand seventeen. Futurity is proposing to expand, renovate, and redevelop a vacant medical office building adjacent to Mount Carmel West into a new Class A commercial office in Franklinton. The total project cost is approximately twelve point forty-four million, which includes four point five six million acquisition costs, five point three seven nine in real property improvements, two million in working capital, three hundred thousand in equipment, and two hundred thousand in furniture. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thirty-one thirty-nine dash twenty eighteen to declare the improvement to certain parcels of real property south of Fifth Avenue and the Batel Campus to be of public purpose and exempt from taxation pursuant to Highway Revised Code fifty-seven oh-nine, Section forty B, to provide for the collection and deposit of service payments in lieu of taxes and specifying the purposes for which those service payments may be expended, to require the distribution of the applicable portion of those service payments to the Columbus City School District to establish a tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of the remainder of those service payments and to declare an emergency. The Department of Development has determined to facilitate the redevelopment of certain parcels of real property generally located south of Fifth Avenue and the Batel Campus. In connection with that redevelopment, the city has entered into an economic development agreement with Perry Street LLC, providing for the redevelopment plan and for the creation of a tax increment financing areas on the parcels. I would also like to note that the Columbus City School District will receive in the same manner as usual all amounts that it would have received in real property taxes had the tax exemption not been granted. Are there any additional comments from the department? There are no questions or comments from my colleagues. I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thirty-one forty dash twenty eighteen to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to execute and deliver a tax increment financing and cooperative agreement by and among the City of Columbus, Harrison Market Community Authority, and WTD Development LLC to provide for the Founder's Park development in the city, to approve the assignment of the economic development agreement with Perry Street LLC to WTD Development LLC and to declare an emergency. Again, this is a companion piece to thirty-one thirty-nine dash twenty eighteen, and if there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Is your second? Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
If I may move to Judiciary and Court Administration?
Please.
Ordinance thirty thirty-eight dash twenty eighteen to authorize the city attorney on behalf of the Department of Public Utilities to compromise and settle the lawsuits of the named plaintiffs in, in a situation related to an explosion that occurred on March twenty-first, two thousand fifteen, that caused damage in Upper Arlington, Ohio, in a total amount of six hundred and forty-nine thousand eighty-nine dollars. To authorize the city auditor to transfer six hundred thousand dollars between object classes within the two thousand eighteen Water Operating Fund budget, to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of six hundred and forty-nine thousand eighty-nine dollars within Water Operating Fund and to declare an emergency. I would now like to ask Attorney Brian Shin with the City Attorney's Office to provide additional explanation about this settlement. Thank you, Attorney Shin.
Thank you, councilmember and members of council. As you said, this matter involved eight cases and thirty-six plaintiffs. The Common Pleas Court designated this case as complex litigation. We worked hard for two and a half years with the parties and worked very cooperatively, excuse me, towards settlement with the help of neutral mediators who facilitated the process. And it is our opinion that these settlements are a fair resolution for all the parties involved.
Thank you, Attorney Shin. Are there any additional questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Chair Page. The next committee to come before council is the Public Utilities Committee. President Pro temp Stenziano chairs that committee. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight in Public Utilities, bring forward ordinance two four six one dash twenty eighteen to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a planned modification of the Professional Construction Management Two Service Agreement with ACOM Technical Services for Division of Water, to authorize a transfer in an expenditure of up to seven million five hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars within the Water General Obligations Bond Fund, and to authorize an amendment to the two thousand eighteen capital improvements budget. This ordinance will facilitate the administration and inspection services for projects in the Division of Water Capital Program. These projects are all related to the drinking, water supply, and treatment systems and are incorporated in the capital improvement program for meeting regulatory requirements, improving the reliability of the city's drinking, water supply, and enhancing work and public safety. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, ordinance two seven one two dash twenty eighteen to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a contract with the Ohio Basement Authority for the Volunteer Sump Pump Program, Blueprint North Linden Phase One, to authorize the appropriation and transfer of four hundred and fifty-five thousand eleven dollars and one cent within the Sanitary Sewer Permanent Improvement Bond Fund, to authorize transfers of three thousand one hundred and forty dollars and sixty-nine cents within the Sanitary Sewer Permanent Improvement Bond Fund, one million seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars and eighty-one cents within the Sanitary Sewer General Obligation Bond Fund, six dollars and six cents within the Sanitary Sewer Build America Bond Fund, thirty-one thousand four hundred and thirty dollars and fifty-five cents within the Super Build American Bond Fund, and to authorize a total expenditure of up to two million two hundred and eighteen thousand four hundred and forty-eight dollars and twelve cents, and to amend the two thousand eighteen capital improvements budget. As you all know, this work for this project consists of installing sump pumps and green infrastructure in the Linden neighborhood. The Department of Public Utilities under our consent decree with the Ohio EPA to eliminate sanitary sewer overflows and basement backups. The Blueprint North Linden Phase One Volunteer Sump Pump Program is designed to reduce residential backups in this impacted area. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, ordinance two seven 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 dash twenty eighteen to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter a professional engineering agreement with Hatch Associates Consultants Incorporated with a short-circuit coordination study and the ARC Flash Study Number One, and to authorize the expenditure up to one million dollars from the Sanitary Sewer General Obligation Bond Fund. This project will reduce nuisance tripping of electrical equipment, update ARC Flash rating nameplates required by the Occupational Safety and Health Administration, and provide a safer working environment for plant personnel. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
And our final ordinance to Public Utilities is twenty-four zero dash twenty eighteen to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into an agreement with Arcatus U.S. Incorporated for professional engineering services for the two thousand eighteen Comprehensive and Water Distribution Master Plan Update Project for the Division of Water, to authorize a transfer in expenditure up to three million one hundred and seventy-five thousand one hundred dollars within the Water General Obligations Bond Fund, and to amend the two thousand eighteen capital improvements budget. This project is necessary to update the population projections, service area growth, raw water supply, and safe yield, water demands of our city. Comprehensive and water distribution systems, master plans are both essential and integral components in ensuring there is an adequate, safe supply of water for economic growth and development in our Columbus area. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
President Harden, if it's okay, I'll move on to rules and reference.
Please.
Tonight in rules and reference, I'm bringing forward three ordinances regarding the proposed utility rate adjustments for two thousand nineteen. All three were on first read at our last council meeting way back on November fifth, and the Public Utilities Committee held a public hearing last Thursday to present the proposed rates. The Sewer and Water Advisory Board met on September twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen, and after reviewing the Department of Public Utilities projected expenditures for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, recommends the city council a two percent increase in water rates and no increases in the water capacity charges. These rates, if we approve it, will go into effect on January first, two thousand nineteen. The proposed rate configuration for two thousand nineteen recognizes that water and sewer charges disproportionately affect lower-income groups. The Department of Public Utilities remains committed to continue the low-income discount program, the discounts participant sewer commodity portion of their quarterly bill by twenty percent. A new payment relief program for City of Columbus power customers also offers a one-time credit up to one hundred and fifty dollars to go towards an eligible residential electric bill. Customers who also participate in assistance programs such as Heap, Medicaid, food stamps, or live in public housing may be eligible for a discount of their water and sewer bills as well, and seniors aged sixteen older with limited income may also qualify for a discount on their bill. One thing that was asked, does this apply to both those residents inside and outside the city? If anyone that's in our service areas would be able to apply for those discount programs. Residents can learn more by visiting the Department of Public Utilities website at columbus.gov utilities. With that, I'll read ordinance two nine three seven dash twenty eighteen to amend various sections of Chapter eleven oh-five of the Columbus City Code and to enact new water rates for the year beginning January first, two thousand nineteen, and to repeal the existing sections being amended. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Ordinance twenty-nine thirty-eight dash twenty eighteen to amend Chapter eleven forty-seven of the Columbus City Codes to enact new sanitary sewer service rates for the year beginning January one, two thousand nineteen, and to repeal the existing sections being amended. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Pass. Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
And finally, ordinance twenty-nine thirty-nine dash twenty eighteen to amend Sections eleven forty-nine point oh-eight of the Columbus City Codes to enact new stormwater fees for the year beginning January one, two thousand nineteen, and repeal the existing section being amended. Seeing no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, President Harden.
Thank you, Chair. The next committee to, our next committee to come before council is the Health and Human Services Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Tyson. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I have ordinance number twenty-nine fifteen dash two thousand eighteen to authorize and direct the Board of Health to accept a grant from the Ohio Commission on Minority Health in the amount of seven thousand dollars for Minority Health Month events, to authorize the appropriation of seven thousand from the inappropriate balance of the Health Department Grants Fund, and to declare an emergency. Columbus Public Health organized eight minority health initiatives in two thousand eighteen. Minority Health Month activities directly served eight hundred and eighty-five community members, provided for five hundred and twelve health screenings for blood pressure, blood glucose, and immunizations. The billboard advertising campaign reached an estimated one hundred and fifty-three thousand residents, raising awareness for minority health initiatives. And again, these dollars come from the Ohio Commission on Minority Health, and the Department of Columbus Public Health also adds additional dollars for minority health a month and for the staff that works year-round to, to, to make sure that we are not continuing to have the health disparities, to hide those disparities, and to work to decrease those disparities, to promote healthy lifestyles, and provide critical information to allow individuals to practice disease prevention. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. The final ordinance of my committee is, ordinance number thirty-one oh-nine dash two thousand eighteen to authorize the Board of Health to modify by increasing, expanding, and revising the scope of services of an existing contract with Equitas Health to continue to provide a harm reduction program called SafePoint through December thirty-first of two thousand nineteen, and to authorize the expenditure from the Health Department's Grants Fund and to declare an emergency. This ordinance is needed to modify the existing ordinance, and the funds have been provided by the Franklin County Board of Commissioners. And the harm reduction services provided by Equitas allow clients who are at high risk of accidental overdose death to access a life-saving drug, naloxone. And during the two thousand seventeen SafePoint provided, three thousand one hundred and thirty-nine individual clients, thirteen hundred lives were known to have been saved. And also, we had fifteen hundred referrals to alcohol and drug treatment, a thousand twenty-nine linkages to medical care, and four hundred and seventy-two referrals for behavioral or mental health. The dramatic, so if you think about what's going on in terms of the opioid epidemic, in two thousand seventeen, the number of clients served by SafePoint increased by a hundred and thirty-three point four percent, from one thousand forty-five app clients in two thousand sixteen to thirty-one thirty-nine during the two thousand seventeen calendar year. The dramatic increase in individuals served is indicative of a high need that the community has for harm reduction services. If the program continues to grow at its current rate, during two thousand eighteen, the SafePoint program can expect to provide critical life-saving services to seven thousand three hundred and fourteen people who are living with substance use disorder. Preliminary data from the first two quarterly reports in two thousand eighteen substantiate this continued growth in two thousand and eighteen. And so Equitas provides onsite addiction counseling services, referrals, referrals and linkage to drug treatment, free HIV, Hep C, and STI testing, and linkages to other services, as I mentioned, medical care and behavioral health care. So it's an important program that Equitas is providing to this community, and hopefully we can get more people into the alcohol and drug and hopefully, we can get more people into the alcohol and drug treatment program so that we don't continue to have this number. But it's pretty astonishing to think that in two thousand seventeen, we served three thousand, and we're going to serve at least seventy-three hundred in two thousand eighteen. Yes. So we're thankful for the hundred thousand dollars from the county. There are no questions or comments. I move for passage.
Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Tyson. The final committee to come before council is the Rules and Reference Committee, and I chair that committee. I have prior years' tabled legislation to be defeated. These are fourteen ordinances that have been tabled for more than a year. Staff has reviewed our legislative files for items that have been tabled indefinitely. These items are either no longer requested or replacement legislation has already been passed. Again, all of these ordinance on this section of the agenda are more than a year old and some are up to fifteen years old. Defeating these ordinances will allow council to enter next year with a clean slate. Will the clerk now read the ordinance numbers into the record of previously tabled legislation on tonight's agenda?
Ordinances two thousand one dash two thousand seven, two thousand three dash two thousand seven, zero zero four six X dash two thousand eight, zero eight three seven dash two thousand eight, zero two five three X dash two thousand thirteen, two six nine five dash two thousand thirteen, three zero three two dash two thousand thirteen, two three oh seven dash twenty fourteen, eighteen fifty-two dash twenty fifteen, twenty-six nineteen dash twenty fifteen, twenty-nine oh seven dash twenty fifteen, twenty-nine oh eight dash twenty fifteen, twenty-nine fifteen dash twenty sixteen, eighteen sixty-eight dash twenty seventeen. And that was the last one.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. May I have a motion to remove these items from the table? Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
May I now have a, may I now move for passage of these items and request a no vote? Please call the roll.
Ms. Brown? Page? Remy? Stenziano? Tyson?
No.
President Harden?
No. These ordinances are defeated. Thank you. May I have a motion to adjourn? Please call the roll.
Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Meeting is adjourned. We will take, now adjourned to speakers momentarily.